All right. Good afternoon, and just before we get going, it's certainly a different setup. And I ask for council's patience, as this is a little bit different for me. We will be doing everything by a show of hand, not pushing the button. And I can manage all of the mics from here, and we'll be voting all by hand. So not electronically, obviously, because you don't have access to it. So we'll conduct the meeting that way. And I know it's going to get more exciting as we move into virtual meetings, where it'll be navigating through another world, but that won't be today. And so with that, I'm going to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Towne, Berlin, and Council to order. And the first item is to adopt and receive the agenda items. Councillor Ferguson moves them, and second by Councillor Whitmarsh. And I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and carries. Next item is adoption minutes, regular afternoon council meeting of March 9th. And if I could motion, please. Councillor Arneson, second. Councillor Ferguson, any errors or missions? All those in favor, posed, carried. Now, a motion to resolve into special close for the items on the agenda and on table. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Arneson, second. By Councillor Davis. Okay, Councillor Richter.
Personnel.
Personnel, okay. Okay, and anybody else?
Do you want to add?
I got those, yeah. I mentioned those. Okay, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, posed, and that carries. We now move into close, so I'll wait for the heads up. All right, so now. So now we'll reconvene the regular afternoon council meeting. And for those that have tuned in, this is a different seating arrangement because of the distancing that we're exercising. And the motions will be by hand, and we'll be able to display it up on the screen. So I will read out those that are opposed, as I always do. So I ask for some patience of our audience who are live streaming in. So now we move on to reports to council. And the first report is F1, Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. And Mr. Backen, a little background on that.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, your worship. So this is actually something that was requested previously by staff and by council. And staff have responded by providing you with the terms of reference for the Housing Action Plan. The report at this time is more procedural in terms of what we're looking at. The financial consequences are not that significant. If we have many more questions, though, Mr. Seffy is here to advise.
Thank you. And I would assume, under the current circumstances, that the timeline and all staff are, you know, the capacity is maybe challenging. So I don't think we're looking at this to come back expeditiously, and I think that's built in that there's some time. Is that correct, Mr. Seffy? Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, unless anybody has a question on it. But I'll move by Councillor Long, second. By Councillor Arneson, second. Councillor Arneson, I'll put your mic on. There you go.
Thank you, your worship. The one question I did have about this is whether or not, given the timeline till 2022, we have a number of new neighborhood plans that are moving forward. And I'm wondering if there could be some consideration or direction that anything that is identified here in terms of the Housing Reserve Fund, that there's some language that's included in the neighborhood plan, so that we use that as a placemaker to make sure that those are considered as part of the configurations of those new neighborhoods.
Yes.
Yes.
Certainly, you can do that, your worship.
Thank you.
All right. So now I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, posed, carries unanimously, with Councillor Ferguson absent. Okay, we move on to the biodiversity strategy. And this one is just for receipt. And if I could have a motion to receive. Councillor Davis, second. By Councillor Arneson. Is there any questions or discussion on that? So now I'll call the question. All those in favor, posed, carried. And by law enforcement, Public Relations Campaign, again, that's a report for receipt. Could I have a motion to receive? Councillor Whitmarsh, second. Second, or Councillor Davis. Councillor Richter, you have a question? Oh, just give me a second here. Okay, you should be on. Just try it, you should be on.
I have to, oh, I have to press the button.
Oh, okay, yeah, you've got the power over there.
Okay. Yeah, I just had a question with regards to the residents who first brought this idea to council for our consideration, if they are going to be sent a copy of this report. And it would probably be nice for them to receive it.
Okay.
Is that possible?
That's my direction, sir. Staff will do that, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? So now I'll call the question. All those in favor, posed, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. And now we move on to the draft 2020-2024 financial plan. And I just want to start by saying, first of all, I want to thank staff again. A lot of work has gone in in a very short time. We certainly are facing a new reality now with the COVID-19 pandemic. And we spent some time over the last couple of months on the budget, a lot of good discussion. And now we're at a point where council meetings are, hopefully will carry on, but we don't know what form. We don't know what the future is. So I did ask staff if we could bring the budget forward so that we can get a budget approved. And we know with confidence that they can move forward and provide the services that our residents require to pay the bills and move through 2020. I certainly know that it's just about the end of March. We're a quarter ways through the year. A lot of these items have been started, money's been spent. And that the new budget for 2021, I believe, once this is approved, staff will be immediately working on working towards the next budget, which we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what this year is going to bring. And there's a lot of uncertainties out there. So certainly, it is challenging for us. So I appreciate members of council's input. I know I had some ideas, and others had some ideas, and we've tried to take these ideas and respect everyone's, they're all good ideas. But how are we going to get this thing moved forward that we know we can't reopen this budget and go line by line again? We know our time doesn't allow for that. So I'm really asking for council's consideration that we can move forward, and certainly respecting all the information that's come through. So that was one thing I was looking for, is get a budget passed. We've got to move on with our business. And the other one is some flexibility for our staff. You know, again, we don't know what's coming. We will approve a funding envelope. And I think council has to understand that at some point, staff might come to us and say, you know, we need to divert money from this project to whatever emergency funding, and we don't know what that is. Or we might have to defer this project to next year due to capacity. I have no idea what the future is going to bring. And so I think we need to understand that staff needs some flexibility, and we have to give that to them. However, it doesn't mean that they don't come back to council when there's a change. And we will have the ability after this week to hold virtual meetings through other means, electronic means, so that we will have that opportunity to have the necessary oversight that we should have. And the other item I thought of in this process is how do we, in concert with the province, who I know are looking at ways to relieve the pressure on our taxpayers, they're certainly looking for ways to relieve pressure on provincial taxpayers, and we have municipal taxpayers. We are bound by legislation on some things that we have to do. We do have to have, at this point, taxes have to go out and be paid by beginning of July. We do have to have a 10% penalty by legislation this, you know, after. But we have some flexibility on when that penalty is levied. And we want to make sure that we don't cause any confusion in the public, but we also want to make sure that we allow for some relief that we can do. But we also are working very hard, and I know the mayors are working, and mayors have talked to the province about relief for municipalities, what they can do, relief for taxpayers, what kind of programs we can have, such as hardship deferral program, which has happened in the past, where through certain circumstances, residents, taxpayers can have their taxes deferred. So a lot is happening, but it's very quick. We don't have all the answers, but again, it's how do we do some relief? Certainly, these options, I think each one of these options had that part, is part of all of them. I think we all have the same desire. I haven't heard anybody say we don't want to do that, just different ways of doing it, and I appreciate that. So a bit of a preamble on the process, and I do want to turn it over to Mr. Backen, because I know he's been working very hard with Ms. Sinclair on addressing the options that have come to him from members of council, trying to come together with one that might work. And certainly, we have a process here. And I'll talk about the process before I go to Mr. Backen. We'll get the motion on the floor. We'll have a discussion first. Everybody have their input before we get a motion. We'll get the motion on the floor, and perhaps, you know, maybe by the time we've had a little discussion, and after listening to Mr. Backen, we have an idea which direction we're going. Certainly, all the procedures of our council are in play. Amendments can be made, everything can be done. But hopefully, at the end of the day, we have a budget that we can move to final, which later this evening, we'll have a motion to have a meeting on Friday where we could consider final, if we get for a second or third tonight. So Mr. Backen, I think with that preamble, I'll turn it over to you to, you know, provide some of the staff's concerns and ideas, and maybe a discussion from you to represent staff on the options that have been presented.
Thank you, your worship. It certainly was a busy weekend, and I think all of, all members of council that participated were sharing their ideas and their thoughts. And as well, I want to recognize both the efforts of Ms. Sinclair and Ms. Bauer in trying to keep this process moving. It was an interesting, I guess, period of time since when you introduced the subject in terms of where we've ended up. I guess, just by way of a roadmap of where we ended up, as was referenced, a thought process was that we may wish to, like, proceed in light of recognizing the current circumstances, and we certainly agree with that. However, I would caution against a wholesale opening of the budget. The budget we've arrived at is a result of many hours of work by council, and as well, many compromises that were made along the way. So from that framework, we tried to listen, and we tried to come up with options. And in fact, at one point, we had four, almost five distinct options, and it was through the work of staff and council that some of those were actually reduced. As was referenced, the first option was called Option A, and it's disappeared from you because the mayor made some suggestions and chose to withdraw that. If I were to draw a parallel, Option A was probably very close to Option D, but Option D has taken the concepts, refined them, taken input from others, and tried to actually streamline some of the processes, recognizing a potential change in terms of there was a deferral of the program and some ways of making up those revenues. And that was the high level of dealing with that. Option B, as it originated, was based on some staff concepts and talking to some of the members of council, trying to figure out where there might be some desire to actually make some fine tuning that would actually help us through this process. And the result was effectively the deferral of one project, but most things remaining the same, and then some language being added in to actually recognize delay of the penalties and some work with other levels of government to try to mitigate the circumstance. Option B.1, as we're calling it, and it's B.1 because it's been refined from the original concept, was really to defer one project, to take the revenue from that project, to therefore reduce the commercial tax base requirement from 5.95 to 3.33, and to maintain almost everything else and defer one project. Option C. and D., I won't speak to those in detail because others may wish to speak to them. They're a bit more substantive and reflect, I think, perhaps, perhaps opening the budget up a little bit, which is something we're trying to resist, because I know there's many theories and many good comments on that in terms of what that could look like. But again, at this hour, I think we're simply trying to project into an uncertain future. And as you said, your worship, recognize that it may be necessary, despite all of this, to reopen, that while having some budget amendments later on in the year, once more is known. So as we look at Option C., then, it begins to try to streamline some of the processes. It begins to try to reduce the rate of increase, and it attempts to deal with a potential shortfall from borrowing and use of surpluses. Option D., similarly, tries to reduce the rates, tries to actually capitalize on some of the things that we've heard as well, by deferring certain capital items, by reducing the rates, the taxation rates, and as well, by looking at some creative means to either borrow or use reserves to mitigate it, and then as well has the clauses of penalty adjustment. We've added some notes, only in the attempt to provide some comfort in each of those circumstances, in terms of where the unknown funding may be raised. They are not exhaustive, they're not exclusive, but at the onset, we thought it would provide some comfort in terms of how we wish to proceed. So recognizing there's a myriad of concepts out there, maintaining the principle, though, of trying not to reopen the budget too far, and trying to, I guess, maybe reduce rates without having to impact future reserves or borrowing, is why we resulted with B.1 before you, a conglomerate of many opinions and many people's work, but also recognizing that Option C. and D. are viable if council wishes to do so. But having heard from some of you, I know that there's many issues in terms of some of the unknowns or the consequences of so doing. So that would be our introduction to it, your worship. The resolutions, this is here to give us direction. With the limited time that we have to make sure that the bylaws are on for tonight, tonight's agenda has both the budget bylaws and supplemental agendas, because this is moving very quickly. And as you say, that we're trying to actually make sure we've got as much work done as we can before this break. And again, it's a break in Notion only, because come Friday, if time permitting, we can begin to do electronic meetings, and we can maybe deal with some of these issues going forward.
Thank you. And I see Ms. Sinclair's mic on. Did you wish to add anything, Ms. Sinclair, on the budget process and what has gone through? I know it's, a lot of work has gone over the last weekend, over the last weeks, and the capacity that we have now with, for staff to do more work, especially as some staff are self-isolating, we don't know, you know, there's different situations that are happening, and the capacity of our financial staff is starting to be stretched. And so maybe you could add some comments. I know it's not doom and gloom, we have a lot of people working, a lot of great staff, but there is a risk that some are self-isolating from being in contact with, you know, coming back from vacations and that sort of thing. It's been my observation through the township. Perhaps you could add some comments.
Sure, thank you, your worship. I'd just like to say, just to echo what Mr. Backen has said, I definitely hope we don't get into taking the budget completely apart. I understand the options that are in front of us here, and I think we can facilitate them fairly smoothly into the bylaw. And I think, I want to also say, I believe that once we finish this process, we're probably going to, in not too short order, depending on what happens with the external circumstances, probably be launched right into the 2021 budget, I'm guessing, fairly shortly. So I think we will have opportunities before this becomes in the back of our mind and out the back of our mind, we'll have opportunities to revisit it and decide how we're going to sculpt it in the coming year.
Thank you for that. So what I'd like to do now is open up to council, all of council, and one way is to go just by hands, or just to go around the table and get some comments. Okay, Councillor Richter.
First of all. There, oh, I put it on myself again, that's great. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for starting us off on a series of dialogues over the weekend. I sincerely appreciated his effort to try to bring taxes down across the board for everyone to 2% this year. And I think that, given the situation that the public's in out there, this is a good thing that we're doing for them, and I support that. I also want to thank Councillor Woodward, who actually was the architect of a large part of the budget that we were going to be voting on today, and for the amazing research that he did into how we could change things. And one of the ideas that Councillor Woodward had that I particularly appreciate is the fact that we could defer projects rather than resort to internal borrowing. From my perspective, I really don't have an appetite for internal borrowing of anything. There is enough borrowing in this budget, as we know from the previous discussions that we've had, to the tune of $100 million in this past, or in this year alone. So I really don't want to borrow anymore, and I don't want to saddle other councils with having to make up for this internal borrowing. I think that realistically, if we look at what's happening out there, there are projects that we've approved this year that have no chance of getting started this year, just because of the fact that people won't be working. And by the time they get back to work, it's probably going to be very late in the cycle for the projects to start. So my preference overall in this budget would be keep the 2%. I think that's a fabulous idea. And make it across the board, so businesses and residents. The key projects that the public came out and spoke to in our open house, the 240th and 56th intersection, plus the 272nd and 28th intersection, we should retain these, but eliminate the borrowing to free up and to look at projects that could be reduced instead. And again, Councillor Woodward, with his amazing ability to research in a short period of time, put together a list of three projects that we could essentially eliminate this year, and just not eliminate, but to refer to next year that would free up these monies. And I very much support the idea in Option D. of a 1.75 after the first business day penalty, after the first business day in July, and then a deferral to November. And the copy I have here is incorrect, it says 8.75. I believe it should be 8.25. And again, that was an idea that the mayor came up with, and Councillor Woodward further refined. So that's the compromise I'd like to see. Like, the basic structure is here, but I just don't think we should be looking to fund that 0.98% decrease out of internal borrowing. And I'm particularly concerned, because the source of the internal borrowing is the Water Projects Reserve or the Water Capital Reserve. And I'm, we don't know what's coming in the future, and I think we should be hanging on to our reserves as much as possible. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. I've got Councillor Whitmarsh, then Councillor Woodward, or no, Councillor Whitmarsh, then Councillor, do you want to go around? Should we just go around? Let me just do that. We can go one after the other, or just by hand? What do you guys want to do? By hand?
Just go around.
Okay, so Councillor Long, I'll get you on.
And, yeah. You can have anything to say.
Oh, hang on. Sorry, I've got the wrong. There you are, there we go.
But I'm a little concerned about, so Option D. is the only one that I see here, unless I have the wrong copy. I know there's been a number of versions circulated, but Option D. is the one that talks about 2% for all. So I'm confused about the comments I just heard from Councillor Richter, because to get to 2% for all, there's internal borrowing. Now, maybe the other document maybe is missing, that talks about deferring projects. But, you know, just speaking in general, your worship, and I was involved with Option C., but I'm not even going to support that. I kind of like B. myself. And that is because B. talks about just deferring the one. It's actually not deferring, I don't think we should be using that term, I think it's staging. And the Yorkson Community Park is very important to me and to many of the residents that I've spoken to. So I don't take it lightly, but my understanding is, and I hope it's correct, that by staging it, you know, the project will still continue, because it's a very important one. And I think, as we had a discussion earlier, or has been discussed in a number of ways at this particular time, unprecedented time where things are uncertain, it's not, in my opinion, a time that the local government has to stop. Or in fact, I feel that it's going to be quite the opposite. I think that we're going to, local government will be faced with huge challenges to deal with this, the impacts of this pandemic, and we're going to need all the resources that we can possibly muster to do that. So as much as it sounds good to go to the 2%, and we'll have some more discussion about it, I thought that the 2.95% and then the 3.33% was a pretty good compromise. But I wanted to state this, and I don't, I didn't see it here, but I did send it to some people, that the province and the federal government really have to come to the table because of, I believe, the need of local government. Even though we're under directives of the provincial health officers, and we get direction from above, we're on the, I won't use the word frontline, because that's not appropriate, because I think that would mean you would be in a hospital or something. But we are very close to our citizens and their desires and their needs, and there's going to be an awful lot of work to be done to keep our residents happy, and that's going to cost money. So everybody has to pay their way. But there is a tool that the province has, and it was alluded to, in the tax deferral program. Right now, there are a number of prerequisites and conditions that have to be met to get a decent rate on tax deferral. I think the province should be lobbied, and that's why Amendment Four and all of these, or Three or Four, which one are you talking about, is to work with the province and UBCM and others to try and get some of these initiatives activated. If they very simply remove some of the conditions on that tax deferral, any property owner could then defer paying the taxes completely and have it put onto their home. And if that was very reasonably done, then I think that's a better way than the intent with this moving of the penalty rate. Now, we already changed the penalty rate to 5 and 5, so that's going to help folks that can't pay, perhaps, or help them with their planning. But I'm very worried about that amendment here, because by lowering it so much, many folks may actually choose not to pay, thinking that they're only going to pay 1.75%. But really, what you're doing is committing them to come up with the money in November, and maybe in November, things could be worse, who knows? So I'm very worried about that deferral. I think it sounds good, but my favorite term is unintended consequences, and that could put people in a position where in November, they don't have the money, and now they have to pay the extra percentage, which will total 10%. So that's a big hit to them. If they can't pay it, I don't know what's going to happen, that goes against their home. Whereas I think the initiative should come sooner in tax deferral. I think that is the answer, if you're worried about paying your taxes, and I think the province needs to help us with that. So when it comes time, you're going to have quite a challenge, your worship, to decide is it Option B., C., D., or the one I don't have? But I think I would like to thank staff about Option B., because that's the one that they were behind the most. It was initiated by some of your ideas, your worship. And I don't really have a problem with those, except I am concerned about the lowering the rate. It sounds good, but it might put people into further hardship in November, so I have some concerns there. I think that does it. I wanted to add, if Amendment Four, which is Four and some, and Three on others, but the amendment that talked about working with the UBCM, I'd like to make sure that we put slash FCM in there. I forgot to put FCM. So that the council would work with UBCM slash FCM, the province of B.C., the federal government, to develop financial relief plans for property owners.
Thank you. And, you know, just to comment, when we do go through this, we'll just go amendment by amendment, so it'll be council's vote, and so certainly, we'll take it slow, and I think it's going to be the body that'll decide. But I really, and you raise a good point on Amendment Number Three. So I'm going to ask Ms. Sinclair, what kind of thought has been given by staff, and how this would be clearly a message to our taxpayers when the taxes go out on, if there was to be a variable penalty between one and the other? So I hear Councillor Long saying, everyone's going to get a tax in the mail, and they're going to look at this, we have to make sure that they understand it, if this was to pass. Maybe you can comment on that.
Your worship, most municipalities, I should say, are looking at this very thing that we're looking at. So I do feel like it will be quite a common item across the lower mainland, and many of them are looking at a similar structure with something really low in the front, all the way to zero, and then the whole 10% at the end, from two to eight, and there's different versions out there. So I think it will be a topic of discussion, but I do agree that you're correct. And I have confirmed with the ministry that we can do this for one year and then default back to our normal, because one of the dangers is, when you do something like this, is that staff then, or staff, citizens then will want it ongoing, and it will be up to And it will be up to council, if it stays ongoing or if it defaults back to the original. But it can be moved back, so I did want to confirm that before we move forward, and it was good to have that, so that we can use this tool in this time, which is a very unique time. I do think the messaging is important. I think we would work with our communications department to make sure that that's clear of how it's being deployed, and hopefully, it'll be good news. We want to be careful that, walk a fine line between the people that can pay their taxes, do pay their taxes, and don't use it as a form of financing. I hope that doesn't happen, but it could.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Counselor Woodward.
I'm not sure how to sideburn it there.
And it picks up really easy without that.
Yeah, I just wanted a process question, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm not sure if we're going to move amendment by amendment in terms of One, Two, Three, and Four separately, because a lot of these proposals sort of rise and fall as a group of amendments, depending on like the amounts of the projects being cut and internal borrowing being required for some and not others. So I think I'd want to maybe question that, and hopefully, we can find a way to move forward without division, because I don't, I think some of these won't work if they're divided. Won't be able to, say, take Amendment One and vote down Amendment Three, won't really, sorry, take Amendment One and vote down Amendment Two on like Option B One wouldn't work. Same for Option D. It kind of rises and falls as three amendments in a row. So I just want to mention that.
It definitely is challenging.
Yeah, it's going to be challenging for you to navigate this, so.
One thing I heard, just on that, is like, I heard there are no good choices during this time, it's just good decisions. So we're going to, I know it's tough, when we have choices, it's difficult, but we'll work, it's great to hear from all the councils, and then somehow we'll start.
So I was trying to get it all quick yesterday. So just for council's information, Option D does have some typos in it, so that is, Counselor Richter is correct. The title's incorrect. It was not 1.5 and 8.5. It's intended to be 1.25 and 8.75. Or, you know, 1.75 and 8.25. It doesn't matter that much. It can be consistent with Option B, or be slightly more beneficial on the front end. I sort of leaned in the direction that if we can do something, we should do it, and if we can do more, we should do more. We're in a unique opportunity, given that our budget has not passed yet, and we're fully into the crisis that we're in. And if it truly is a state of emergency, then, and I believe we should be looking to do as much as we can do. And I believe while Option Four has some key elements, it carries forward 3% into next year versus 3.33. So we're not giving up that 2.98 or 3% for the life of the municipality that will carry forward. But for this year, given the emergency that we're in, 2% for all property classes achievable from reserves seemed like a good compromise going forward. So to reiterate, I attempted to not cost the municipality a lot of money over future years, when the economy returns to normal, by ensuring a reasonable increase of 3% carries forward, while delivering 2% for all property classes this year with some reserve, uses of reserves, which would be then formalized or revised in the 2021 budget, when we have more time to determine exactly where that will come from and how it would be returned. So that's why I prefer Option D, Mr. Mayor. I think that's fairly obvious. I prefer Option D, just under the idea that whatever we can do, we should be doing. Thanks.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. So just so I'm clear, so this reduces it to 2.98 across the board, and then internal borrowing to bring the 0.9, to fund the 0.98.
Yeah, so maybe Ms. Sinclair can clarify, make sure I use the right language. Ms. Sinclair, the idea is that 2.98 carries forward in future budgets, but this year, we deliver a bill of 2%?
So the way I had set up in my mind is that we're looking at the difference between the 4.02% and the 2%, which is a 2.02% drop. We're going to take care of $900,000 of that by deferring a capital project and reducing the contribution of capital related to that project. So that's done. That's done. There's no future year ramifications of that, which was great. And then the second piece of that is the 1.7 million that we will borrow from the, using Option D, would borrow from the Water Capital Reserve. If it was replaced in year two, then that would be done as well. That would be great. It could either be replaced by a tax increase in year two, or it could be replaced by, I talk about first in, first out, in terms of surplus, tag the first 1.7 of surplus that there is, if there's surplus. That's another big question in these times that we're in right now, would go towards this project, and then that would be done. With the longer-term scenario that I think Counselor Richter was hoping to avoid, which is having to continue it out for a couple of years, in which case, we would have to borrow for a couple of more years from the reserve to taper it down, if we were going to do a tapering, kind of like Mayor Froze, like the Option A at the beginning. That would be the longer term.
Yeah, and so I want to clarify, too. Option D was a revision on Mayor Froze's initial proposal to try to simplify it and give us some flexibility in 2021 to maybe solve that more quickly, or have more time to debate how that's solved. But the way I look at it, and I want to confirm again, make sure I have it correctly, that when we start, if this were to be moved and adopted by council, Option D, 2.98% would be the baseline that would come back in the 2021 budget, not 2%. Is that, so we would be increasing the overall tax revenue. Maybe Mr. Backen can assist, if I'm not explaining it correctly. The idea is that next year, we're moving forward from here on as if we had increased taxes by 2.98, but the bill that goes to residents is 2%, not 2.98, if that makes sense. That was the intent.
But I understand it, too. Because we're just taking, funding, we're saying it's a 2.98, and we're just funding it temporarily, and then having to pay it back.
Well, next year, if we would have, we would be as if we had taxed everyone in the bill, in the mail, 2.98, but we're making it up or drawing down reserves to.
I caught up with you, sorry. The expenditures would reflect 2.98, absolutely, yeah. That's correct.
The idea is 2.98 carries forward for the life of the municipality.
It's starting with a 2.98 base for expenditures going into the second year.
Okay, thank you. So as long as that's clear for council, that the difference between this and B is that addition, a drop down from carry forward of 3.33 down to 2.98, and then using some of that internal reserve mechanism to give that further break this year, but only one year, down to a 2% property tax bill versus what would carry forward. Is that correct?
Some property tax bill, correct.
Thank you. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I want one question, Ms. Sinclair. So this is assuming that those projects go ahead, and the 1.7 million is required. It is possible that this budget gets approved, let's say Option D is approved, that we have the ability, now we've actually authorized staff to borrow from internal, but that's assuming that you're going to need it. There's a chance, a very good chance, that a lot of these projects will not even go ahead. So I think the concept here is, and that's where I talked earlier on, about giving some flexibility to staff, like, we totally understand that a lot of these projects may not even go ahead, that they're going to be put off till next year, deferred to next year, and this 1.7 might not even get borrowed. So it'll be a whole different conversation when we're looking at the 2021 budget, if the 1.7 was never even borrowed. And you're able to carry on, but those projects didn't start, or there's ways that staff will find that they didn't need that money. So is there some, can you comment on that? Because that's kind of my thinking, too. I know this is the flexibility part that gives staff that flexibility, but it's very difficult for staff to go and start cherry picking projects that I think are the most important project to me, and Counselor Long has the most important project to him. Staff have a very difficult time, and I think we can all have our ideas, but I think we need to have, as council, some trust. I don't know if we don't, but just, you know, we know we have to say, this is an unusual year. This is something that we can't predict, so.
I suggest an amendment, and maybe potentially, Mr. Mayor, as well. Mr. Backen, before you comment, so then, if Option D is considered, Amendment Three at the end of Paragraph Two could have if required at the end.
If required. Okay, so, but thank you.
Your worship.
Mr. Backen.
Just to.
Sure. Oh, do you want, this is, yeah, do you want to check? Do we have?
So you don't have this?
Your worship, we're referring to the distribution list of today, item number one, March 23rd.
V3, yeah.
That's something. I had staff to print it, so I'm pretty sure it's the right one.
But it says V3 out.
B1, Option C, Option D.
B.
All version. Listen. Oh, V3, yeah, there it is, yeah. V, Victor.
He isn't Victor.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Backen, on my.
Your worship, perhaps, just to change the focus and come back to your question, one point of clarification we should have just going forward, so that Ms. Bauer can keep up, is on Option D, Amendment Number Four, we should simply specify the rates, because as was stated, there was just some inconsistencies. Do we wish them to be the same as it is referred to in Option B1, item Amendment Number Three, which is 1.75 and 8.25? Or is there some other number? I think we can insert it, both of those, just so we have consistency, so we're not struggling.
If I had a suggestion there, what we could potentially do is, I believe that that contemplation is in every option. Perhaps we could carve that out and debate it separately, and then other people can amend it to whatever numbers they wish. I mean, I played a little bit of time with this between the one, the two and the eight versus the 1.75 and the 1.25, between the theory that some people, of course, can pay the property tax bill, may not, and use it as a financing tool, as Ms. Sinclair mentioned. But of course, not knowing what that percentage is versus the percentage that may have struggled to pay their property tax bill at this time. And would, I personally would lean in the direction of going a little further, but I'm not hung up on it. Thank you.
Okay, we can save that, but I'm kind of leaning on the 1.75, because I know I discussed that with staff. Unfortunately, with the way, and the province may do something on this, this will be mute, but it is, my thinking is, after discussion with staff, we do want to, we will need that revenue. And so we want to encourage people to pay their taxes, but if they can't, it's not such a hit. It is a reduction of over 3% on that initial hit. I think that's, but we can debate that later, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that, and we'll go to.
So back to your question, then. The question was really in terms of the flexibility that the provision for borrowing can provide, and you're quite correct, it does provide that. And if the projects aren't proceeded with during that year, then that helps our cash flow. My only caveat, though, is in the preponderance of the things we're doing, we tend to balance our budget so that there's some equality year to year. What I'm trying to say is then, that the projects that perhaps weren't started to improve our cash flow would still be authorized to proceed at a later date. Now, council, of course, can revisit any project at any time, but ideally, we revisit them before they're started, because after they're started, it's very difficult to manage a closure of a project. So the fact is quite correct that, yes, it does provide us with flexibility, but that means that the project is authorized, subject to the cash flow of the subsequent year, which is a little bit different than suggesting that we simply, the projects aren't proceeding, because we're not building those numbers in as a surplus, we're building them in for a project envelope that, you're quite right, timing-wise, would come the subsequent year.
That's right, yeah. I think it helps. Thanks. All right, Councilor Debus.
Okay, thank you very much. We had an awful lot going on this weekend and today. I, you know, I, just to clarify, we're going to, we're going to be voting not on so much option as we're going to be voting on amendments.
Again, we are plowing new ground here. Thought you might like that one.
[laughing]
But, you know, if we kind of come to some sort of, as I'm listening through, everybody would come to some sort of consensus of which object, or which option they like, maybe we can go to that option right of ways.
Okay.
That's my thinking, and maybe it'll work, maybe it won't, but we'll see how this discussion goes.
Okay. I like the idea of, I have Option B1. So anyhow, to defer the 900 for, for the Yorkson Community Park, that goes, that will be, we'll have to repay that in two years? I guess that's my question. Maybe I'll just hold a tougher second, I'll carry on. Whether it's 1.75 or 8.25, I think that's a good idea. It shows that, hey, you know what, we're really trying. Well, it doesn't just show that. It means that you can now pay 2%. It helps you out. We also have a borrowing bylaw that we borrow, I don't know if it's 25 million or 30 million, that is specifically designed, if our taxes don't come in, then we can dig into that, and it's in a very good rate. So I think that probably a lot of people will say, okay, let's maybe use it, but we're, we have, we have that loan. And I know that comes, I think that comes from before, before the due, that comes before the budget is legally allowed. So there is that option. I just, I'm just, down 2% for all. I think that it's showing every, these are tough times, and I think that we, we are, I'm looking forward to seeing how we're going to vote on the amendments and that sort of thing. It's, it's, makes you think, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, your worship. I am challenged, as usual, by these budgetary considerations that are coming so late in the day, although this is no excuse to, you know, want to spend the necessary time. We are in an emergency situation, and as was referenced already, this is an anomaly. There are so many other communities that have already created their budget, and I really don't know at what point they're going to be reviewing their budget and making these amendments. So my assessment of the situation, it's really great that we have these different options, but I still think that we should strike a cautionary note to ourselves and say, you know, we want to put this forward, so we have a concrete plan, but I think we still need to consider that we do have an opportunity in the future, should things really go sideways, that we allow ourselves a certain amount of flexibility. And so, it's dire as it sounds, I like to look at this with the potential in six months, for example, to review this, especially as the province and the federal government seems to be forthcoming with different plans, and we're not exactly sure how we're going to integrate what our strategy is with what funds are available. So trying to balance the signal to our community, our business and residential community, that we are wanting to help them and help to alleviate the stress of this current economic situation, but at the same time, not necessarily disadvantage ourselves in the process. So having said that, I'm generally leaning towards Option B1 at this time. It's not that I'm against some of these other things, which I think when we vote on it, I would not necessarily know right off the top of my head, but this idea of the internal borrowing, while I see it has merit, I'm suffering myself from borrowing fatigue. I don't want to look at our reserves as something that we will no longer have available to us, should a secondary crisis strike. I really don't know, not having a crystal ball, but I'm, it's difficult for me to look at that as something that historically has proved itself to be very valuable. It is the classic squirrel with some nuts. And, you know, putting away the nuts oftentimes mean you have peanut butter and not just a bunch of shells to work with. So I like the idea, if it were possible, and this is where my challenge is, not to reopen the budget, because I don't want to get into those really deep dives into one project versus another, but finding some potential to defer some of the projects that are higher-ticket items, so that we don't have to, or in a very limited kind of way, dip into the reserves. So I'm not sure what that would look like, if somebody has an idea about that. But while I do understand the rationale for internal borrowing and paying it back, I do recognize that that will come with a cost in the future, and I'm not sure that we're going to like what that outcome is in the longer-term projections for what our budgets can look like in subsequent years.
Thank you. So Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. Really good comments here. I have a question first, and then a couple of comments. When I, when I look at my version here, and maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but when I look at B1, it seems to indicate that if we, if we adjust the business rate from 5.95 to 3.33, that that will result in a loss of about $900,000, which will make up for by deferring a portion of the Yorkson Community Park. That's how I read that. But when I read D, Option D, it seems to indicate that the $900,000 deferral would actually cause us to get to 2.98 in both, in both business and residential classes. So I'm not sure if what, which one is accurate. One says that we'd get to 2.98 and 3.33, and the other one says we'd get to 2.98 across the board. So I'm wondering what the clarification that is.
Yeah, I see that, too, Ms. Sinclair. There's a little bit of a difference there, of the business tax being 0.35 difference, and yet we're talking the same dollars. So is that just a?
Your worship, I'll start, and Ms. Sinclair can help. I think the distinction between B1 and D is in D, there is a reduction that takes you so far from use of those funds, but then because of the next step, the so far from use of those funds, but then because of the next step that comes later, it takes you further down. So I'm calling that a blend. When you take the blend, it takes you further. Ms. Sinclair, is that correct?
Yeah. The way I look at it is not exactly the same as I've heard, and this is what I mentioned before. On option one, the, by having it to be 3.33 across the board, that is a loss of approximately $900,000 in revenue. So just stopping there and saying, okay, where can we find $900,000 in revenue? And that's where we identified or where the, the property, Yorkson Community Park development was identified. That would result in a rollback of the contribution to capital for that, for that year. That's how, how we would save that $900,000 in taxes and then we would have to ask for it the following year. So it would be an increase in the following year. So the word defers, deferred is maybe, um, we're deferring the expenditure of it, but we will have to ask for that money back next year or use some of the existing now reduced contribution to capital to fund it. On the option, the last option D, um, I start out with a 4.02, which is where we're at, minus the 2.02, or sorry, minus, to get to two, we have a 2.02 reduction. And the 900,000 will take us partway there and the 1.7 will take us the rest of the way there. The other part of it is how it's paid back in the following year. So the 900,000 will get us down to where, percentage wise, I'm just going straight from 4.02 down to two. So it's a 2.02 reduction and those two pieces will, will get us that distance.
Yeah, I'm still confused. Yep, try.
Yeah, appreciate that. Ms. Sinclair, you just tweaked me again a little bit by suggesting that option D is a 2% tax increase. We're going from 4.02 down to two. Yes, we're sending out a bill that is 2%, but we're carrying forward into next year as if we had raised taxes at 2.98. So maybe, maybe we still need to clarify.
Yeah, that, it, it is a 2% property tax increase. That is, that is what that.
The idea though is that we would raise property taxes by 2.98% that would carry forward to next year, but then we would pull some money out of reserves to send out a tax bill of 2%. So we, when you say that it is reducing tack, property tax increase from 4.02 down to two, that's not the intent. The intent is to carry forward 2.98 into next year.
If I could try, I think what, what's being suggested is that the rate goes from 4.02 to 2.98.
Correct.
It carries forward from that and that's dealt with by whatever process or sum is left. Then on a one-year basis, and on a one-year basis only, there's effectively a buy down of that 2.98 to two.
Correct.
So you're using surplus and simply to buy that down, like you were buying a car and the interest rate was brought down as an example, and then that goes right back up. So it goes back up, so it's a one-time as opposed to phased in over two or three or four years to repay that.
That's correct. So that carries forward future years of municipality at 2.98. And I say it again, the tax bill people get is 2%.
So what's, and another, another way of saying it, if I, just to find out if I'm understanding it correctly, because I am struggling, I admit. We are replacing tax revenue with transfer from reserves.
Correct. For one year and one year only.
Right.
And then we would address that in the 2021 budget, which was following up from the direction Ms. Mayor Fro started with, which was amortizing that over future years. My, my preference in which option D presents is to address that when we have more time during the 2021 budget.
So again, I think, I think what I, maybe what I stated before is we're preserving the spending level of the two, of the 2.98, but we are actually replacing, we're actually bringing that the tax rate will be an increase of 2%.
Okay, so the way I would word it, just so we're clear, because I think, yeah, I think we're getting closer, the property tax increase that carries forward is 2.98 and then we will send a tax bill of 2% drawing, drawing the additional 0.98 for this year and this year only from reserves.
But that says to me then that we will just put it right back up in the second year, right? It's going to go as 2% for 2020. In 2021, it will be reinstated to the 2.98.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, can I really raise on a point border as well? You've let Mr. Counselor Woodward speak here and ask some questions. I'm somewhat confused because you said we're going to go around the table, but Counselor Woodward just had about a two and a half minute discussion and now I'm more confused than ever. Are we looking at a new document based on new information?
No, uh, Counselor Ferguson, uh, Counselor Whitmarsh, and I'm going to give everybody the same opportunity because I had some ideas. Counselor Whitmarsh asked a question and, and he allowed Counselor Woodward to help answer it, so there's a little bit of a back and forth. This is complicated and you'll. That's fine, that's fine. You'll have your opportunity, so.
But no, but that's, well, I don't want to challenge this here.
No, no.
Doesn't seem very fair to me.
Well, we're not talking about fair, we're talking about let's get this done and have a good.
Well, Counselor Woodward just discussed two and a half minutes and I'm now more confused. I wonder if there's a new item on the table that we, I know.
Sure. Okay, so, so you have asked me a question and if this is confusing, it is confusing for all of us. We want to have a good bit of a round table here and we're, I'm going around here and so we'll get to you and, and then we'll get to everybody. It's, we want to make sure we all understand it.
Confused with the debate between Counselor Woodward and.
We're not debating, we're just asking questions.
The discussion, I'm confused because I wonder if some new information provided.
Oh, I don't know, I think it's just clear, everybody's trying to clarify it, so.
Why would he ask a question if there wasn't new information provided?
Okay, well, we'll get to that. So Counselor Richard, what, what is your question?
Clarification if I could. I think the question that Counselor Whitmarsh is, is asking.
Counselor Whitmarsh will continue, yeah.
Was, you know, what's, the difference between B1 and D isn't quite clear. And from my point of view, there is a very clear difference between B1 and D. In B1, it's 2.98 for residential, 3.33 for business. D is the only one that goes with your original framework of taking it down to 2% across the board for everybody. That's to me, the difference between the two of them.
My only reason was that where was the borrowing involved and how was it involved?
Yeah, oh, okay.
That was, Counselor Woodward had asked the director and it wasn't clear to me if there was new information or not.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to it. So I'm going to carry, let Counselor Whitmarsh carry on and then we'll, we'll move along.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Don't do that again.
Don't do that again. That was helpful, uh, information from Counselor Woodward, but it's not exactly what the question was that I was asking. What I'm asking is, is the information in here. So when I look at option B, just in the first two amendments, I understand that one has borrowing, I understand one's at 2.0. When I look at the first two amendments in option B, it suggests that if we deferred $900,000 of operating contribution to capital of the Yorkson project, that would help us reduce the business tax down to 3.33.
Right.
Okay? If I go to option D and I look at the first two amendments, it suggests in here that if I defer $900,000, the exact same amount of money from the Yorkson Community Park, I'm actually able to lower the business tax now to 2.98 with the same amount of money being deferred.
I can explain that.
That's the question I'm trying to get answered.
I will try to explain that one too. The difference is, um, the borrowing in D makes up the difference. Like there's that .35, so point, so if we go to 2.98 across the board, but business is at 3.33, there's a .35 difference in the business tax, correct? So that .35, whatever dollars it is, is embedded in the 1.7 million because 1.7 million then covers that gap. That's, that's what Ms. Sinclair said. So the 900,000 is applied to both, but on D, we're, we're taking internal borrowing to cover the difference, which, which, you know, you think of that .35 as one piece. So there, there's more borrowing. So it's, so you've added an option, so you, you know, here's, um, so 2.9, uh, 2.98 for the residential and 3.33 for the business requires 900 across the board. Okay, so we know that. If we go to D, um, Ms. Sinclair starts with the, the 4.02, which was our, which was what we had going forward. So let's bring it down to 2.98, let's apply the $900,000. So you've got this car you're buying, you're throwing a $900,000 down, that's what you don't have. So, you know, that's what you have for both. You only have $900,000, it's an expensive car you want to buy. And then, but that means we have to borrow 1.7, whatever it is, million dollars. If it was to go, um, so, so that's what, the difference is being made up in the borrowing, that .35 that you're concerned about. It's made, made up in the borrowing.
So it is more than a .98% reduction that has to be brought down by the 1.7?
That's right.
It's actually more than that, even though this says .98, it's only .98 on the residential side. It's actually 1.35.
That's right.
On the business side.
And that's being made up by the borrowing. Is that, does that make sense?
Well, it makes sense to me what you're saying, but that's not what it says here.
Okay.
So that's why I'm asking for the clarification.
Sure.
So I'm assuming that's the case.
Yeah.
So the, another comment I would make is that I'm wondering if this is, and maybe it's a question, comment, slash together, but I'm wondering if this, there's been an accounting of the number of businesses that may or may not be in business depending on what happens with COVID. And of course, we have no idea what that looks like, but there's all sorts of estimates right now that as many, that businesses that typically go out of business, it's around 20% per year is what is typically happening. And many of the, of the business agencies now are suggesting that could increase by another 20% over the next year. So that means that we would have maybe as much as 20% or 30, or sorry, I don't know what the number would be, 10, around 10% less businesses than what we would normally have going bankrupt in a given year and whether or not this accounts for it. Because I'm thinking that we may not actually see the business revenue to the same degree that we're expecting because many businesses are simply not going to make it. So we're counting on it based on the number of businesses we have, but we're going to actually see substantial business. So I'm not sure that this is going to add up and maybe staff has accounted for that and recognizes that there's way more businesses losing money and not going to be paying taxes.
So, um, I'll ask staff to help, but what, what, you're, you make a very good point. The ability for residents, whether it's residential or business, to pay their taxes is certainly, could be impacted by the current situation. The fact of the matter is the tax is unlevered against that property. If they can't pay that tax, it, they'll end up, you know, under the current legislation, based on provincial legislation, they'll end up paying the penalty and still owe the tax. That property tax stays with the business and then unfortunately it kicks into other mechanisms that the township has to recover the tax as far as selling the property for tax sales. Unfortunately, that is a reality and thus we get some relief from the province, we, we're on that. So that tax doesn't go away, it might not get paid, but it will be owed to the township. The township will be here for a long time and we may have to take certain measures and working with the province to deal with delinquent taxes, let's call it delinquent taxes. They can't make their tax payment, the property owner owns the building, he has no revenue, goes bankrupt, the bank then owns the building. Who, who pays the taxes? That, that answers, I don't think that process changes. The province may come up with some mechanisms to assist, but the fact of the matter is that tax is still owed to the township and, and it'll, it'll be attached to the property, not to the business. So, so the business may go, the business may have to, the bank may take over their property, the tax is still attached to that business. Mr. Backen, can you maybe, is that, is that fair? And I, I know in the 30s, when there was the depression, that, and I, I shouldn't say I know this, but, uh, you know, some of the properties that we had, like the forest down in Glen Valley was, was acquired in the 30s and people at that time had a difficult time paying their taxes during the depression. And municipalities all over ended up with land. They just, you know, land was a lot cheaper then, but people walked away from it and yet, and we ended up with land at that time. I hope that's not the same thing this time, but it, it is a mechanism that's there. Mr. Backen?
That's correct, Your Worship, and I appreciate your direct recollection of 1930. I think that helps it all put it in perspective for us.
Sorry, that was there.
The, uh, the point though is, I, I think you're correct. If you think of it this way, if there's a property that has a tenant on it, the tenant usually is responsible for something called triple net charges. Those triple net charges usually include the taxes. If the tenant fails to pay their taxes and for example, is financially unsuccessful or not viable, they often leave, then the responsibility still remains with the landlord to pay for those taxes. If the landlord doesn't pay for those taxes, then we have the tax sale process. So from our perspective, while we're incredibly sensitive to the needs of business and landlords in these difficult times, it's really a cash flow issue because the money will arrive, it's just when it arrives. It will arrive either from the tenant, from the landlord, or ultimately through a tax sale where the money will be made up and then the process will continue again. And that's the, the way the process works. So effectively, the municipality is insulated from the success or failure of the business, but is, I guess, secured by the value of the property.
Does that help? It's, it's, it's a.
Yeah, I think it's helpful, but it just, you know, the amount of pressure that we put on, I, I recognize that it's, there's businesses and then they, and then the owner of the building is responsible for it. In some cases, it'll be the business owner who now doesn't have a business. So, yeah, I recognize it's just the incredible difficulty that this could place, so I'm just making that point.
Yeah, and that's a very good point. And I think that's where we're trying to work with the province. The province, I think, is recognizing this, uh, the mayor's, I know, sending a letter to the province to say, hey, you know, we gotta, we gotta address this issue and a group of mayors, I should say. And then, um, but we have, we have a process that we're, we're dealt this hand by legislation and, uh, we, we only have one hand that we can play. We can tweak it a bit like we're doing with some of the penalties and try and ease people in. I'm, you know, we, we don't know what's going to happen. It might be a three month, a four month and some businesses will survive and obviously some won't, but the property remains and, um, the process remains and how the province steps in to assist property owners, I don't have that information yet, we're so early. We still have to, uh, fund our infrastructure repairs and maintenance and firefighters and police, and that's what that tax, tax dollar goes to. We may end up in a cash flow issue where taxes aren't paid. Now we're waiting for that money, but that, it is just deferred one way or the other. It's, uh, it's not, it's not what we like to see. We want to see businesses thrive and be able to pay their taxes and residents, but we don't know where we're going. So did he have any other questions or that's enough? Counselor, Counselor Ferguson, you've listened to everything and you've got the last word and then we're going to start looking.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank staff, all the directors, administrators and everyone for their time and, uh, working on the weekend and the efforts they put in. It certainly, there's an awful lot of, uh, debate and discussion from all members of council, including myself. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, your comments as well, we went into that. And I wanted to thank Counselor Woodward because, uh, Woodward and, and Counselor Whitmarsh, both the doubles for the time and effort they put in. And also your question, I must have read off your sheet because that was what I was thinking of. There was a bit of confusion on the D and I guess once we went around, there's a lot of confusion at the table and, and that's no one's fault other than we're in difficult times. You know, we're in uncharted waters right now and, uh, I'd have to agree with Counselor Arneson. I mean, you know, what are we going to do? I mean, what are we do, what, what are other communities doing? If I may, the first question is, do we know what other communities are doing at this point in time? If I may?
Mr. Backen?
They're very much up in the air as, as was referenced previously. A lot of other communities have completed their budget process. So what they're, they're intending to do is to let matters, I guess, progress and then they'll revisit their budgets by way of a budget amendment as need be, but more likely in the fall, after some time has gone by. Now that has challenges because that puts businesses under some pressure and that also puts some pressure on because you actually have then the taxes being levied come July. So that may, that thought process may lead to some additional reconsiderations in the month of June, but remember, we're getting up to the provincial deadline for setting up the tax rates. So it becomes a bit of a conundrum for them. So I suspect what you'll see is in fact, something come fall with some programs that may lead to other initiatives, penalties or, or some future relief in the, in the subsequent year.
Okay, and I know these are uncharted waters. I mean, number one, they may hold their line on their budget, which many from the past. Number two, and they may offer some incentives or something by way of, of, of something, credits or helping organizations, but I don't know if they would, number three, reduce their taxes. I mean, that's something they've already decided upon and it's a tough situation for us to be in. I have a procedural question. Are we voting on budget today or are we just looking at discussions, if I may?
What we're doing is on the afternoon, we're, we have this report. So, uh, the, the, the end goal is to have council go through this, vote on the direction we want to send to staff. Staff will come back in the evening with first, second, third reading on the budget. So incorporating what we discussed.
I, I wanted to ask that because it was, you know, there's a lot of questions and a lot of information out here and, you know, we only have so many hours and we spent a number of days working on the budget and now we have some recommendations in front of it. I, um, rather than going on and on and on, but other people have said, I'm, I also, I guess if I had a choice, it would be the B1 option, um, I'm not sure about amendment three, there's some questions, whether five and five or whether we're, you know, the implications of the 1.25, 8.75 or 1.75, 8.25, and whatever exactly we agree on or end up with, I'm, 1.25875 or 175825 and whatever exactly we agree on or end up with. Those are questions I would have on that. But I'm really caught up with some confusion in option D. I'm caught up with internal borrowing proceeds from, internal borrowing from Waterworks and next year, what the, what the actual rate is for the business class and a few other, it's just a little bit of, well, perhaps some questions around option D that I have. So the one I'm kind of looking more at is, is option B1 because it, I guess it seems to address as best possible concerns that I would have and other than amendment three. So that's where I'm at. I know that the business community is going to have some challenges, we're all aware of that. We want to provide some kind of, some kind of adjustment there. I know that we also have to work very closely with Metro Vancouver and also the province and FCM and the federal government as incentives come through or options come through or, or ideas come forward. You know, in the past, we have to be very, very careful with the province, those people that have already voted for their budget. I'll pick on Vancouver, I think they said something about 7%. And then if incentives or, or ideas come forward, they may indeed be subject to more benefits than those of us that provide incentives from the municipality basis. There is a word downloading in the past, I don't think you'd call it that this time, but that, you have to always be aware, wondering that. So I don't really want to open up the budget that much. I think if we go to D, I think it opens up the budget substantially and those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So I know Counselor Richter wants to say something, we've kind of gone around, I want to do one, so then I want to start kicking in the, I want to start kicking in the motions so we can come to some decisions. So a little preamble on that and it's, as you said, it's a difficult thing. First of all, I want to say, no one has really opted for option C. So is that fair to say we can just take it off the table? We can, okay, that's, that makes a little bit easier. The second thing I want to say is, I looked at option D and I looked at option B1 and they're very similar. Differences in percentages and we certainly can, can vote and we can, my thinking is we put the motion on the floor and then we move an amendment. Some will move an amendment, whether it's option B1 amendment one or option B1 amendment, option D amendment one. And if somebody wants to amend the amendment, then we're going to find out. If you want to move 2.98 all across the board and we get amendment to take the businesses back to 3.33, we can deal with it by motion and then we'll get a sense of what way council wants to go. I think that's only, that's obviously the only way we can do this, is to, is to go through our process. I would also say that, you know, I totally expect that we're not all going to agree on every amendment. That's, we're really going through a process here, but we are council and I don't have the right answer by myself, but I believe that as a council, we do. So I certainly will support when we, when we do find the solution or answer to each amendment and it gets approved, we're going to have at the end of this whole thing, a motion as amended. And, and I would hope that, you know, I may not get everything I want and I've already pulled out my idea is that we would all say, you know what, it's not perfect, but it's, it's what council through a process has come to and we can, we can pass the budget and move, and pass this report and move on. So, so I would entertain at this point, a motion as, as in 5.4 and then we'll start on the amendments. Counselor Richter moves 5.4, is there a secondary? Counselor Arnison?
Oh, you mean the...
Sorry, that's the original one and now we amend it. So, yeah, so just, Mr. Backen, is that correct? We, we put the motion on the floor and now we go through the series of amendments to make it basically what we discussed. And then, and I'm not going to throw on, okay, let's, who's all in favor of B1? No, we'll go one by one and we may have to adapt. It may be that decisions are going to change how much we have to borrow or not. Yep. Yeah, okay. And so, yeah, so I'm not going to consider this part of your discussion. The whole idea is we have to get something on the floor.
I know, but what I'm saying is we're, we've got a hung jury here, depending on where you and Blair want to go. We've got four clear votes for B1, we've got two votes for D. You guys didn't really say where you're going, but the last thing we want to do is to go through this and end up with a defeat vote because it's a tie vote.
There is an option if we end up and we can't go anywhere, we can defer this. Okay, here's, we can defer it to Thursday because I know Counselor Coons couldn't make it because she's self-isolating due to the fact that her family member had traveled. And then we'd have a full council on Thursday and then, under the legislation, we can pass first, second, third, 24 hours later, we're allowed to pass fourth. So it would be Thursday, Friday. And so there is a, there is a way out if we are, like you say, a hung jury and everything's a four-four and everything's defeated. We can't have a defeated budget, so.
Can I just make one more observation?
On the process.
What would it take to make D more palatable for those that want B1? Like, for example, Counselor Long likes that amendment four. If we moved amendment four over to D as well, would that make D more palatable? What would make D more palatable to me is if we limit the 1.7 million from the water reserve to be replaced in year two instead of stringing it out over, and that's why I'm thinking if, if we can get that kind of clarification and that's why I'm going to back D.
Okay, and I, that's a good point. Definitely amendment four and B1 can be put anywhere. I think it's a good one, it should be on everyone. It's definitely, it's, it's, yeah, it's what we do.
Why don't we just move it and approve it then?
Okay, so, so if we want to move an amendment, okay, I'll take, I'll take that and let's just see what the consensus here.
I'll move B.
Nope.
Nope.
B14 amendment.
Yeah, okay. Not the whole thing, just.
B14.
B1, okay.
I think we should do the options as a number next to it because it's different.
Yeah, yeah. So B1, amendment number four.
Amendment four, I'll move it with an amendment.
To FCM, you're going to add, well, you, yeah.
Stroke FCM after you.
That's right.
And I'll second that.
That's seconded, I think that's pretty obvious. We'll call the question on that, I'll, did you want to speak to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not trying to open up anyone to speak, but I think, I didn't put in there or nobody put in there this issue of tax pro, but that's, and I don't, because we don't want to tell the province this is all we want.
No.
That should be brought up, we should be protecting pro on all of that.
Yeah, there's a lot of pressure on that. Okay, so with that, I'm going to call the question on the amendment number four that's as listed in B1. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously?
Yes, and Mr. M, I would move B1 amendment three separately because that's also very common and everywhere.
Okay, so let's, well, B1, you know, C we've taken out, gone.
B1 amendment three. B1 amendment three is also common, I'll move that.
Okay, secondary. So that is, just to be clear, 8.25 November 15th, 1.75 the first, it says the first business day in July, is that the, is that the time? Is that the right wording?
It's the first business, it's the first business day in July, I have it scrapped.
Is the, okay, thank you. Okay, it's removed and sorry, who seconded it?
David.
We'll, we'll take Counselor Davis. Discussion on that. Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Oh, you have a question, so Counsel Long, that's good, that's good, yeah. Oh, sorry, let me get you on there.
Well, as I said when we did the roundtable, I've got some concerns about this. So if it goes through, we really have to be careful about our messaging, because many people may think they're getting a good deal, may think that things are going to improve, but may not have the money in November, in which case they've just paid 10% extra. So I, I prefer not, I'm not going to really support this because I think we're better off to go to the province and push for other ways for people to defer their taxes or find other means by which the taxes can be paid. And the reason is that we've got to have that money. I believe that local government is going to be challenged, we're going to need every penny we can get. So that's why I'm not supporting.
Those are, those are very good points, thank you. I would like to then, do we need to, I know you're concerned, I know you, I'm just wondering if it's clear or staff have the direction, do we need to add to the motion, robust message, you know, messaging to the public or you already have that direction? We don't need that in, okay. Yeah, okay, so I'm going to call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel, Counsel Long, Counsel Ferguson opposed, that amendment passes. All right, so now we're going to get to the meat. So...
Amendment two is equal to both of them, so why don't we just dispense with amendment two?
Reduction in property tax revenue, the offset.
They're in both of them.
A B12 you moved.
Yeah, I'll second that. Okay, so amendment number two.
B12.
So just, just hold on before.
Is there a question on that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Counsel Woodward, you know.
Moving them separately because it's in both separate.
Oh, I got, sorry, I got the wrong mic on. There we go. Okay.
Just a point of clarification, moving them separately or accepting that motion because they're common to both makes sense, but you're not going to vote for that and then not the other. So you could, someone needs to move the block of B1 and the block of D to just include that because it's going to get approved no matter which option we choose, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so, okay, so.
There's no need to vote on that separately, in my opinion, just as a clarification.
Oh, I see, because it is a block.
One amendment one.
One and amendment two on.
Either move the remainder of B1 and the remainder of D and, because they're going to rise or fall together and it could be amended further.
Yeah.
It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're, yeah, they're together, I think you're fine, we could, and then we can always amend it.
Well, I, I had the floor, so.
Okay, Counselor Richter, we're going to give you the opportunity to move that.
Well, if that's the case and we're moving a block now, I'm moving option D.
Option D, so that, so it'll be option D, amendment one and amendment two as a block. Okay, so that's, and then we're not going down to the amendment three on option D. So amendment one and amendment two, it's fair to move those two together.
Okay.
So is there a secondary?
For amendment one and amendment two?
Of, of option D.
Of D.
D, D isn't delta, sorry. It's D isn't delta, right? Yeah.
The only problem I would raise for this, is that amendment one to get to 2.98 isn't possible without amendment three.
That's right.
That's right, it needs extra money. Well, then, if that, so.
That's why you have to do B and then you can further amend.
Then we can amend D. So I think that's what you move.
I did not move B.
Okay, so there would be, okay, I'll just, I know it's a good discussion before we take a secondary. There would be, if we were to approve amendment one and amendment two, we'd then have to have a motion on where we're going to make up the shortfall. So, so we could still do it, but we need to have, find a shortfall of whatever, hundreds of thousands, hundred thousand.
I prefer to move B1 and B2 than amend it.
Okay.
It's basically the same thing.
Counselor Richter's put amendment on the floor under respect. Counselor Richter has amended, has asked for a motion, so I don't have a secondary yet if on, okay, so this is option D, amendment one, amendment two, we can deal with that. And so, okay, it's moved and seconded. If you wish to make an amendment to increase the, amendment to the amendment, to increase the business portion to 3.33, that would be, in effect, the same thing.
Okay, if it's been seconded, I moved it, I just want to say, I don't think we can not understand the difficulties businesses are in right now.
Yeah, I agree.
They, they need that reduction. They're, they're hurting as much as individuals are. So that's why I'm going with option D. It has to be equal for them all.
Fair enough, so, thank you. So all I'm saying is if somebody did want to have what they liked in option B, they'd have to make an amendment to the amendment and that's not what I'm asking to do, I'm just saying that's the process. So is there any other discussion on this one?
So, sorry, okay, so it hasn't been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, 2.98 across the board.
So just for clarification, by, by voting in favor, we are voting to move all business, all the tax rates to 2.98.
You're deferring 900,000.
You're deferring $900,000, there's about almost a $500,000 gap, which we'll, we'll have to discuss where we're going to find it.
That's right, there'll be a subsequent motion that has, that, we can't leave that gap.
That's helpful.
Any discussion on that? Counsel Long?
Yeah, I mean.
God, just let me give me a second here, I'll find your.
We want to, we want to proceed, but it doesn't make sense to me because like, you can't, if we pass this and we get stuck, we have a shortfall that hasn't been dealt with. That's number one. Number two, you know, and I had mentioned it a couple of times to folks that there needs to be some kind of an analysis done here because not all businesses are suffering. Some are, some will go bankrupt, some are doing okay, and some are making extremely fabulous profits actually, right? Anyone that's in the retail business is, is doing very, very well. So I don't know, I guess we don't know what the numbers are, what the balance is, and it's always good to bring taxes down, no one can argue with that. But anyway, I guess I have an issue with, with getting down to this 2.98 where we haven't really funded it. So do you want to have an amendment to that now?
No, okay, we could, I shouldn't say no. What we can do is if this passes, we then go to amendment number three on D. If that fails, then we can go, then can we still go back, Madam Clerk?
I guess I'm wondering why we wouldn't do three as well? I mean, if we're going to do one or two doesn't...
Well, I think what we'll do is, we'll do this, there's several ways of doing it, I'm just going to check with a clerk. So if we pass amendment one and amendment, just say it passes, so we now know there's a bit of a shortfall, we go to find, so we can go to amendment three and that covers this, that covers it all, all off, as I understand, on, on D.
It also achieves the 2%.
Yeah, it also achieves the 2%. So we could then go to that. If that fails, then we have to look, then we could go back and amend it, is that correct? We could still go back and amend to change it to 3.33. So if this fails, so, yeah. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I have a question through your worship to staff, just on the Yorkson Community Park development, we suggested that we would reduce it by $900,000 and according to B1, that would leave 2.5 million remaining to do in 2020, 900,000 left in 2021 or a future year, I imagine. Is there, what would happen if we, for example, reduce the Yorkson by 1.4 million, which would then get us down to the 2.98, that would find the gap? We would stay at 2.98, wouldn't allow, wouldn't have any internal borrowing. Could we do Yorkson Park with 1.5 million funding in 2020 and then 1 million funding in 20, or 1.4 in the following year?
Your worship, the impact is we're taking DCC money then. So by doing so, it doesn't help the general tax rates, we're just effectively using, reducing our, reducing the amount of DCC money we're using, which does not affect the general tax rates. It's only those monies that are coming from general that help us in this situation.
So the 900,000 comes from general, but that's all there is in general, is that what we're saying?
For that project, yes.
For that project, everything else is DCC.
Effectively correct. It might be 950,000, but it's insignificant in the scope of things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question on option D, amendment one and amendment two. So all those in favor? Opposed?
Sir, I'm in favor.
In favor, okay. Any, any opposed? Is it opposed? Nope, okay, so, so that carried unanimously. So I would say thou, you know, the million, the million dollar question, amendment number three, okay, Counsel Woodward moves amendment number three. Is there a secondary for amendment number three? Counselor Davis moves amendment number three. Sure, Counsel Woodward. I was just going to say, this is a variation of what I suggested, I think going to two is good. I don't know how we can do it. I certainly appreciate Counselor Richter wanting to go to two. I'm not sure without really digging in and opening up the budget, how we get to two without doing something. And I think we had a pretty good discussion earlier on the 1.7 million. They may or may not need it, but we have some opportunity to look at it next year and, and so I am in favor of this, but Counsel Woodward, do you give your?
I'm obviously in favor of it as well. I think it was following up from your initial concept, Mr. Mayor, to come up with something that provided some flexibility, didn't lay out the number of years, but still followed the, the general direction that you started to, to deliver a 2% to the mailbox and then we carry forward for 2.98. So if this is passed how it's summarized here, the only other potential is I could have moved it with the if required at the end of the second paragraph.
Okay.
To give that flexibility.
That's right, you did mention it earlier, so we'll consider that.
We'll consider that part of that, Madam Clerk, okay. So that would mean that it's not necessarily borrowed and in all likelihood probably isn't, assuming some projects don't go ahead, given the amount of carry forwards we have as well. So I obviously support this and I think it recognizes the emergency and delivers that[1571.86] support this, and I think it recognizes the emergency and delivers that 2% of the mailbox while, while only dropping the overall to 2.98, thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Just got a question.
Counsel Woodward. Uh, let me get your mic complete, oh, you got your mic, you got the power.
So at the end of the third paragraph, we're putting if required?
Second paragraph?
If required.
If, if, if needed, or if required, yeah.
Okay, and what about making sure that this is going to be paid back in year, or replaced in year two?
It will come up in our budget discussions for 2021, and then we'll have that discussion. We may say we're going to spread it out at that time, but it's, it's, it has to come back in the 2021 budget, so we'll have that discussion. It, so, it's, in a way, it's assumed that we're going to deal with it in 2021, but counsel could say, you know, six months from now, or whenever we're starting to deal with our budget 2021, we could say we want to move it over, that's not specified, and I think we need to allow that flexibility, not knowing what the, what's, what the future is, so, with this thing, so it is assumed it's being paid off.
Should we be, looking for expanded wording? So Counselor Woodward's moved if required, I'd like to put an amendment on that, and if it is required, then it be replaced in year two.
Okay, we can do that, although counsel can still have the flexibility in year two to say no, you know what I mean? Like I'm saying, it's assumed, it's already, it's already included.
No, but the, the intent here is we don't want to drag this on.
Yeah, I know.
We want to put it back.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm going to ask staff if, and if that's, I, I think it achieves the same thing, but I'm going to ask staff to comment on, on that amendment before I take it, just, if you just hold on, Counsel Long. Ms. Sinclair, by putting in, to deal with it in a year or two, well, basically dealing it in 2021 budget, counsel could still make changes in 2021 if that motion's on, and if the motion isn't on, this amendment, it, we still can, we still have flexibility either way, because it's a motion, or is it embedded in bylaw?
No, through your worship, or to, to your worship. And when the 2021 budget comes around, we open the whole thing up again, so it then becomes a 2021 to 2025 budget.
Yes.
And we revisit it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, either way, it achieves the same thing, so I don't mind having that amendment on, if it gives some comfort, but Counsel Long, you want to play into this, then we'll, Counsel Long.
In front of me here is option D.
Yeah.
Three, paragraph three says that. Paragraph three says that it has to be repaid in futures as determined by counsel in the 2021 budget, so I think it's there, I see it there.
Oh, well, why don't we change in future years in year two, or in 2021?
No, it just says, it can be repaired whether it's in year two, year three, or year one.
Yeah, it does include it.
It gives the flexibility, worship.
It is included to be paid, repaid in future years as determined by counsel during the 2021 budget process, so it could be done in 2021, or it could be in.
Whatever we decide at the time.
So that, really, your motion is embedded in this, your amendment.
Well, except it's not really, because it says in future years, so Counselor Woodward, is, is his if required included in this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, then I would like to make an amendment to paragraph three, to be repaid in strike future years and put 2021.
Okay, so you move that amendment to the amendment, we can debate that, that's fine.
Can I just clarify, I, I think that if required is actually amendment two.
We, we, we moved it with that in, and there was no objection.
Amendment three, paragraph two.
But, but you're saying you wanted it in paragraph three.
No, yeah, I, I, we've accepted by unanimous consent, basically, that, because when we, Counsel Woodward moved amendment three, I think you moved it, he said, oh yeah, I wanted to have, and I had written it down as part of the amendment, so this was an oversight, so it is, it was in the initial one, so, so I need a seconded for Counsel Richter's amendment to the amendment.
And that's the paragraph three.
Yeah.
So it's to be repaid, strike, or to be repaid in strike future years and replaced with 2021.
Okay, is there a seconded? Counsel Woodward seconds it, discussion on that?
I have a question.
Counsel, Counsel Woodward?
Question, question to the staff.
Hold on, yeah, Ms. Sinclair, if we were to change that, the implications of this change are such that we're giving direction to repay that as part of the draft budget presented to us for 2021, which we could then subsequently decide to change, is that correct?
So.
Okay, thank you.
It does, Counsel Whitmarsh, do you want to speak?
I did have a comment, but not, not on this.
Okay, okay.
Not that exact topic, but the same motion.
So it's, it's, it's two ways of saying the same thing, Counsel Long, Counsel Long.
We started off the discussion with flexibility, you know, allowing staff to do whatever, I think that if we're doing this, and we have to sort of remember now, in a year from now, that, well, we did say that maybe we could amend it.
Yeah.
I, I think you're setting yourself up for, for something getting lost in the cracks. When it says future years, that could very easily be anything, right? Could be the next year, could be the next month, so, it may have to be, so I think that the flexibility is built into this, that's why I can't support the amendment, that's too stringent.
Thank you.
We're in flexible times, we need to be flexible.
Thank you. All right, on the amendment to the amendment, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Counsel Long, Counsel Ferguson, Madam Clerk opposed, it carries, so now the amendment as amended, can I have?
Yes, I have.
Counsel Whitmarsh, anyone?
Just a question through your worship to staff, on the Water Capital Works Reserve, I mean, we are right now three months into the year, we, is there some sort of level of, of confidence that we may not, or we will not need to use these funds? Some members are suggesting that we likely won't have to, but I haven't really heard that confidence level come from staff, that we are good to go three months of the year here, we know we won't need the money, and we're good to go.
I know I did say something, I didn't say it's likely, it's, it's a possibility, but Ms. Sinclair, if you could.
The Water Capital Works Reserve, like any restrict, what we refer to as restrictive reserve, does need to be available if it were required, so if there was an, an emergency that a water, some major catastrophic water item needed to happen, then those funds would need to be provided, and we would need to dig back into our regular reserves to replace the water reserve funding. If it got to too big of a level in this process, I'd be a bit more uncomfortable, but at this level, I feel like we, if, if there was a catastrophic issue, we would be able to replace it.
And so it's only, it's only an emergency situation that we could potentially have to go into our general reserves to, to recover some of this money, outside of an emergency, we don't need to have this money?
Outside of an emergency, we need to be able to do the work that's required by the water utility, and it does look like we do have enough funds to do that over the next, the five-year period that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? I'm going to call the question, although, oh, counsel, okay, give me a second, give me a second, there we go.
On the whole thing, right?
Yeah, no, we're, we're, not the whole thing, this is on amendment three, with amendments.
The amendment three, okay, so we're, we started off with B one, A, number three, number four, and then we went to option D one and two, now we're option D three.
Yeah, so it's option D.
That's where we're procedurally, okay, my question is procedurally, or I guess the question would be, under option B, what was the property tax for residential?
Under option B, it was 2.98.
2.98, well, now we're voting on 2.0?
Right, right now, we're voting on amendment number three and option D, which says reducing it, because, because it was approved to go to 2.98 across the board, so now we're saying reduce it by 2.98, make it to 2% across the board, make up the difference of borrowing from the water reserve of 1.701, 750.
That's where I had the concern, I was more concerned, I was more happier with the 2.98, given the fact that we'd made some changes to the business tax, like, and light industrial, that's, and we'd made that from 5.95 to 2.9, I could live with those ones, just the actual, the, the 2.98 for residential, any of that?
Thank you, so, and I will say, so I'm, I will call the question, but I will point out to counsel that if this is defeated, that we then have to go back and find a way to make up the difference of about, what, four, $500,000 that embedded in that, going 2.98 across the board and dropping the business by .35, so, just, just to know, if this fails, we're looking at another way. So I'm going to call the question, amendment three as amended, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Arnison is opposed, Counsel Ferguson is opposed, that carries, so now we're back to the main motion as amended, is there any discussion on the main motion as amended? Okay, I'm going to, sure, Counsel, just hold on, Counsel, well, you can push the button, you've got, you've got the power there.
Say, and I, I don't know if this is going to go through or not, but I'm really impressed about how we've worked as a group to govern here.
Thank you, yeah.
When you think of all the options we've been looking at, I think we've done a good job.
Thank you. Oh, no, oh yeah, you're right, I was going to make some comments, but I was going to wait for the vote just in case, because I've done that before, I've learned.
[laughing].
Counsel Ferguson?
I didn't want to say that I didn't like that option, but when we go to the readings, I'll hear the reading and make a decision according on the budget, thank you.
Thank you, okay, so I'm going to call the question on the main motion as amended, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously, thank you very much, counsel, and now I can say, great job, great work on the input over the weekend. Staff, thank you very much for putting it together, and we had a good, good discussion, and everybody can feel confident that I think we've done a good job with what we have for residents. So, we only have a minute left, so I'm going to get back to my agenda, and we're on to, we've got a minute, so we have G, G is correspondence, G one, G two.
Move.
Move receipt, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long, move receipt, any discussion on those? Call the question, although, oh, Counsel Richter? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, carried, Counsel Richter, you have a question?
Yes, the issue with G two and the waste bans, maybe this is not the time to discuss it, but I would like to have a presentation from staff and public about this issue, it's very concerning to people in terms of the environmental.
Impact on.
Impact, yeah, and maybe we need to look at another option, so I would like to, can I just move a motion that we defer this to another meeting?
Sure, why don't you just move to defer that piece of course, or it's been, we've received it, but to refer that to a subsequent meeting, I don't think we're going to be wearing it with us.
Presentation, for presentation.
For presentation, so moved, is there a seconded? Counsel Woodward, all those in favor? Post carried, thank you.
I have a quick one.
I'll move H one.
H, H one, is moved, we'll move on to H one, moved, second?
Second.
Davis, all those in favor? Post carried, any questions on the minutes? Other business, Counsel Ferguson, you have some?
Just really quick, there's an item five on the agenda today about, that might work, 280, you'd sure love to get that done, and the Giants aren't meeting right now, so if they can work that and get that work done, use the time accordingly, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to move, through all the chaos, option D, I forgot to move those three projects that I sent out.
Okay, okay, let's.
It's possible to, I would like for you to speak up.
Okay, well, we're going to now need a motion to extend, I'm just going to get a motion to extend, move by Counsel Richter, second by Counsel Ferguson, all those in favor? Those carried?
So I just totally forgot to move.
Okay, okay, I'm going to just, just give me a second, I'll finish off with.
Might require reconsideration.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do that, we can do anything, we've got the magic. Counsel Ferguson, you've got your point through?
That's a.
Okay, that's good. Counsel Woodward, you're on, so.
So I did send this around, and I did forget to move it while we were doing, whether it is in regards to those three DCC projects that I sent around earlier today, which I discussed at length with Mr. Safi and Ms. Cordero earlier today, Mr. Cordero earlier today, and so if anybody had any questions about those before maybe discussing it further, but it was important to me, given the, the status of WARCAP being known, but moving forward, that these projects did contemplate land, which is funded by the WARCAP mechanism, so it was appropriate, and I discussed that with Safi at, at length, appropriate and reasonable to defer these to the 2021 budget.
Okay, so, so it's moved to defer those to 2021 budget.
Yeah, so that was the one that I sent emailed around.